Is that true?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Melissa's making the motion, Enrique's second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Michael? Stacy? Aye.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Good luck.
Thank you.
Hope the students come forward. That'd be great. Next on our agenda is the Strategic Direction One, Increase Measurable Student Learning and Reduce Achievement Gaps as we Provide Equitable Student Opportunities to Personalized Learning and Student Engagement.
Good evening again, Chair Schimmick, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. We're here giving, Dr. Schuttenjer and I are here giving a brief presentation this evening as a complement to the resolution work that you've been doing over the last couple of meetings and to also kind of round out the conversation this evening about what we've been working on as a district. So, as I mentioned, we're going to spend probably the first half doing a review because the last time that, back in, on March 9th, prior to some things changing with COVID-19, we had a very robust group here giving an overview about what was happening in the classroom, professional development, and so we can't recapture that sizzle, I guess, tonight with the number of people, but we're going to be re, we're going to be re, sharing those, that information this evening. But we are going to be talking about a couple of things, employing a few things out that are, that are, that are new in that time and to keep you apprised at the board. So, we're going to be going over, again, priority goal work, talking about Reimagine Minnesota, most specifically those student strategies, professional development, which is the foundation of the work we've been doing, our work with CLR and learning strategies and practices. And then, we're going to, the last two items, the Voices Framework and then Personalized Learning Curriculum Review and Development are the two items we're going to spend just a little bit more time on this evening. As you know, we have our Priority Work Goal area and the connection to the strategic plan and specifically the strategic directions. The real piece here that, why we have this, obviously it guides our work, but the work that we're doing with Equity also is embedding itself in our core values and vision. When you think about a compelling educational picture of what we intend to create and you talk about what drives our words and actions, that is the hallmark of our work and also fits nicely with the resolution that, that as a, as a district, as a board you've been working on and took action on this evening. With Reimagine Minnesota, there are three very simple, I guess, simple things, but very hard to, to really put into action. And again, that's the collective work around it. See all, serve all, and support all students. These are those nine strategies. As we continue to do our work in Prior Lake Savagery Schools, the updates that we bring forward to you are going to be aligned to these strategies. The strategies from Reimagine Minnesota help contextualize and provide a process so that we have evidence in these areas as well as how do we continue to get better in these areas. This is also a common ground for other districts who are also in Reimagine Minnesota where we can develop and share strategies and professional developments and insights in this work. In cultural competence, what is really CLR, I believe this was Emma Breitenstein who presented back on the 9th, talked about what is it, what does that really mean? And from that teacher perspective. And, and also specifically vocabulary, building on student assets, their, their background, bringing their heritage in, how do they, how, how do we use the student's experience as their, as a, as a place of strength in their learning? Further, looking at Q Comp and Peer Coaching, how do we support our teachers to integrate these classroom experiences? Brandy Allstrand shared, you know, they've been starting to work with Zaretta Hammond, the Equity Alliance Cohort, and prompt development, really bringing and working with teachers so that they're doing critical reflection on the strategies that they're doing in the classroom and engaging students. If you look at all the words on this one, I want you to look under the cultural competency questions. Mindset, skill set, responsive, reflection. That's the four key things from Peer Coach and how we're working with staff is where's their mindset at, what are the skill sets, how do we continue to train that? How do, how are they responsive to the data or how students are, are receiving the instruction? And then are they reflective? And how do they change? How do they grow? Or better yet, how do they recognize next steps for professional learning and development? This year, we do have many things, we have several things that we were not able to successfully complete last year with the cohorts due to COVID-19. So some of those things are being replicated in a virtual manner for our teachers, academic vocabulary, and online learning workshop with our elementary and secondary leads. We'll have some leadership coaching for our admin and building principals. And then we also have the opportunity as a school board as well to do some work. And then also this summer, we did the White Fragility Book Study that includes several of you as board members, district admin, and teacher leaders. On the community bridge side of things, probably, the, the community bridges are always important, but currently, right now, it's really taking on a very big different level. Our cultural liaisons have been extremely busy relative, it, it's the family connections. And obviously, probably the goal, which is the last bullet point up there, should have led this slide. But it is about how do we continue to build connections, relationships, and engagement? Particularly when we're in distance learning, particularly when we have, we have to be very mindful of how, what we're able to do during a pandemic. And the last thing we want to do is to isolate people in that way where they don't feel like there's a connection with school or with their teachers or with other resources they may need. And that includes student outreach, family support. And certainly, our Community Education Department has a huge role in the work of, again, offering classes and connections for, for community members that are integrally connected to the school district. On the personalized education route, I'm going to have Dr. Schuttenjer talk a bit about this a little bit more specifically with our distance learning.
Yeah, we've talked quite a bit about the Laker Learning Framework and about how we believe learning should be personalized, purposeful, and empowered. And we're really seeing that shine in distance learning as well. We're really seeing teachers hone in on, on students' individual skills using the changes in, in space and time that are created by distance learning to be able to have smaller groups, more focused instruction, and more individualized instruction for students. In terms of teaching and learning, leadership and support, we provided a lot of professional development to help teachers adapt to what is essentially an entirely new paradigm for education, and all in the last eight months. So, some PD, at, at the beginning of the year, in terms of jumpstart, we've procured some resources to help make distance and hybrid learning easier and better for both students and teachers. And we've also facilitated a lot of planning to ensure that grade levels, schools, and levels are aligned in what they're planning. Oops, sorry. Our elementary technology integration specialists and our secondary technology integration specialists, you heard from them at the November board meeting, have been integral in the support and planning of this professional development. And we've really done a lot of work in really tightening up our use of some of our core platforms like CSO, Schoology, and Google Drive and G Suite to make the experience smoother and more consistent for students and families.
One of the things I will mention, and, and really a kudos to, to the teach, to the support that our teachers are getting from the teaching and learning team. When you talk about professional development and training and then going out and having to immediately implement those strategies, this has been some of the best professional development that our staff has had and been able to implement immediately because they've had to. And so, it, it is action, it's research in action or action research with getting that training, implementing that training, and continuing to build that skill set. Student voice. In the past, we've, we've, we've given you a couple of examples or shared some examples about how do we continue to bring student voice to the center of our decisions? That's where, the, back in March, you heard about courageous conversations that are happening at the high school. And that's looked a little differently right now, just with, with COVID. But we want to spend some time, just a little bit more time, talking about the Voices Framework that, that we did this summer, late summer and early fall. And as you know, as Dr. Stallow has mentioned, our theme this year is PLSAS, Voices. And so we partnered with Captive, Captivate Media to conduct student interviews and have constructive conversations around diversity, inclusion, school culture, climate, teacher-student relationships, and student engagement. You know, oftentimes, when you want to hear what's happening, you go ask the students and they're very forthright. They tell you what's happening, they tell you what's going on. And through that, what we wanted to do from, from the project goals is, number one, empower student voice to get that feedback on what their experience is. You know, how do we continue to improve climate, culture? And how do we, what are their solutions for some of the issues that, that we're seeing or that they're seeing? From there, using it as a way to guide our professional development as a district. What is, what are the tools that our teachers need in order to address some of the issues beyond just additional pedagogy? But what are some of the things that are happening that we need to round out and look at the next steps for our staff? And then, again, building on the cultural competency questions. Mindset, skill set, being responsive and reflective, and then implementing. So our timeline, we presented the project and student conversation points with district staff, administration, building teacher leads back in August. A lot of review and reflection, listening to the voices, listening to the perspectives that students shared. From there, the teacher teams developed facilitation questions, which then, over during the course of Fall Workshop, all of our buildings went through that process of listening and hearing the student perspective and then having guided conversations and reflective, reflections with the teacher leaders. From there, it was broken down into identifying the next steps for professional development. And the next areas as a district we need to continue to explore that will align to the Reimagine Minnesota strategy. So, the work we did always comes back professional development, professional learning, and then how do we incorporate that into the next steps as a district? And so, there were some themes that did come out during this process on student interviews and self-revoted feedback. Some of the stuff you, we, I guess we, we had a hunch, but we're not quite certain. And, you know, from the staff side of things, there was also the staff reflection in the process too. And what we're finding is staff oftentimes do not feel equipped to handle racially charged issues. Recognize what's their role in that, how do they enter that? How do they engage in that conversation? Again, not necessarily, it, it, it's, it's the heart and the mind, recognizing that they need to engage, but how do you do that work in a respectful way? In a way that's, that people aren't going to feel awkward in doing it, even though it can feel awkward doing and in, engaging into that work. Students, particularly at secondary level, feel the use of the N-word and other racial slurs, slurs is prevalent. From slang, from using it in, in different connotations. Again, also making others feel uncomfortable and also not, and not necessarily knowing how to address that. Staff lacking the skill set to ask the difficult questions because there's a worry of offending other staff and students if they do. Again, some of that trepidation is understandable, but then how do we continue to work with staff to improve on that and move forward? With that being said, while there's some trepidation there, they want more understanding and competence around diversity, inclusion, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, et cetera. So, while there's trepidation, there's a, there's a quest to learn more and do more. And that's exciting to see because that helps us shape the next steps that we do. And then ultimately, relationships between teachers and students need to be strengthened. That's something we continue to talk about, the relationship between teachers and students. There's pedagogy, there's standards, there's discipline, all of those things. If you don't have a strong relationship, you can't get to the things that are, that are in a classroom around learning. And so, continuing to build on that as well. So the recommendations, again, come with looking, developing a plan for identifying, strengthening those engagement and relationships. Reevaluate some of the roles, systems, expectations regarding student and family engagement. How do we continue to find more strategies to engage families and students? Create a short and long-term plan to embed student voice in decision-making. Again, I believe you have a student rep on the resolution that you created through the board. Again, there, and you have a student rep here as a board member. You know, and so those are, those are powerful ways that, that we have evidence of. How do we continue to do that and get students involved? Following up with the students involved in the Voices Framework. You know, their voice, they, 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 they shared their voice. Has anything changed for them? Has it been honored? Are they seeing some differences? Are they seeing some things differently? Are there things that, that, you know, a couple of months later, we need to look at again? And of course, ongoing relevant diversity and inclusion training for all staff. So, this was a extremely comprehensive project. But it, what, it, it was more than just asking students to, hey, what's going on? It was very intentional conversations about their experience. What are some of the challenges? Also with staff, what are, how are some of the things that, how are, what are, what's, what are their perceptions? What are they seeing? And then how do we move forward as a district? The cultural inclusivity with the standards curriculum and, and system, I'm going to turn it back over to Kevin, talk a little bit more about how we're doing that and then we'll, we'll kind of come to the end of the presentation.
So when we engage in curriculum review and development in the normal review cycle with any K-12 program, we really first look at the outcome data through an equity lens. We look at who is the program serving well, who is the program not serving very well? When we look at ELA, we think of, for example, grades. Who are, who is represented in our honors courses and our remedial courses? Who is overrepresented, who is underrepresented? What are the achievement and opportunity gaps we see? And we use that to ask questions. We use that to analyze the data and ask why. Why is this data the way it is? And what can we do as teachers, as educators, as, as leaders in the district to change that? And one of the things our ELA group has recognized in a review of their data is that our, our curriculum resources, our texts, the books they read, the stories they read are primarily from a single perspective, from a generally white, Western European perspective or American perspective. And there's a need to increase the diversity of the texts, both to help our, our students of color see themselves in what they read and to help our, our white students understand more and see more of the world around them in our incredibly rich and diverse world. So today at the district curriculum advisory meeting, we had two Prior Lake High School teachers talk a little bit about what it's been like to integrate some more diverse texts. We were able to support them this summer with doing some of this work quickly because the times demanded it. And so they, in both English 12 and English 9, adopted some texts by some BIPOC authors and have been using them in their classes already. And they're saying that the conversations their, their students are having are unlike any other conversations they've had before. They're asking different questions, they're noticing different things. They're, they're thinking differently about things they've read before. So it's, in, in addition to providing context on the, on the world they're living in now, it provides context onto some of the things they've already read. And so we are going to continue to support that in an ongoing way, K-12. In social studies, we're doing the same. One of the things that is challenging in social studies is they tend to be textbook-driven courses. And there is no perfect textbook. And so one of the things we did with the Social Studies Committee is we had them bring their textbook and really use a tool called the Absent Narratives Resource Assessment Tool to analyze it, to engage in a dialectic discussion with it and, and turn to a random page and see who is pictured? How are they pictured? How are they portrayed? Are they portrayed positively? Look at a, a, a random page, read the text. Who is portrayed as the winner or the leader or the pusher or the doer? And, and which narratives are, are sub, are subaltern, which narratives are really diminutive? And how do we address that? Because there aren't textbooks that do it all, is what we found. But how do we integrate supplemental resources? How do we integrate primary sources to address those other narratives so that kids are seeing and students are seeing the, the broader picture? And are wrestling and thinking critically about multiple perspectives. That's one of the goals of social studies. I will say that COVID-19 has presented us with some challenges in curriculum review, development, and procurement because we have spent the vast majority of our time and energy preparing for hybrid and distance learning. But we are continuing on and we're working with these teams as we get into the next, into 2021 as well, to continue that work.
Pass it back to Jeff.
Yep, thank you. So, this is a, again, a brief overview of the update we just provided you. Covering all these things, we want to thank you for the time to give you a brief update this evening and, and give you a few highlights of some new things that we've been working on. And with that, any discussion, otherwise, this is just a, a report for this evening.
Anyone have any clarifying questions, comments? Mary?
Of course I do. So, when the, the Voices Project occurred, you know, there's, there's an interesting couple of slides here where you talked about, let's say, using a racial slang term that's very derogatory, et cetera, and how people felt about it. One of the things that has always kind of concerned me about, about the environment is that the people that are most attracted to making a change are the ones that participate. But the ones that we're really trying to encourage to change are the ones that we don't always get the population sample so they can be educated and learn and see both sides. So, when you, when Captivate Media came in here, what was our demographic percentage and, and how was that chosen in light of, of what I just stated?
So that, so we, I might ask Kristi to come up and talk a little bit about some of that. But we had high school students, we had middle school students, and then also we had elementary students, so grades four and five as well, which I know for Captivate, Captivate Media was different for them. They've worked with other districts where they have, they have predominantly worked with secondary students. The key was, is we were, we were specific around trying to find a diverse population of participants. Males, females, the gender, race, so that we could get a wide variety of perspective. And again, with the students, we had, they're great students. And I think it, while there's some, there was a great information that they shared, certainly there's other students that would have other perspectives. This is really the tip of the iceberg relative to this type of, of work. But, you know, this is something I think we have to continue to circle back doing. But I'm going to turn it over to Kristi to kind of give a little bit more specifics around, around that group.
Yeah, thanks Jeff, and I think it was well said. We spent a lot of time flushing that out to make sure that we were, making sure that we got a really diverse sampling of students. So, we worked closely with principals too to try to reach different student populations. So for example, you know, a lot of times we talk to students, they're the ones that are very active and they participate and they, they're well-spoken and they're involved and they're, they're just students that love school and they're always there, the ones that you go to. But they actually spend a lot of time looking for students that, that really, that is not their, their bag. You know, they're, they're just not into it. They, you know, it, it took a lot of, you know, really convincing to get them to come in and trust that we really want to hear their perspective. There's no right or wrong answers, we just want to listen to them. So, I was really proud of the way the principals really spent some time fostering that and getting, you know, the right students to come in and get that diverse perspective.
Do you feel that you, for instance, when I look at that second bullet on the slide where it says students feel the use of the N-word, one of, you know, do we, did we get people that, or students that were, that were actually using that language and get their perspective and what it would take to actually help them be, you know, be educated or understand the roots? Because, I mean, we are in a highly polarized environment. And I, and I guess that's the demographic I, I was looking for. And I don't know how to find that, I'm just wondering if that was represented.
Well, I think in the, in the, and yes, there is that kind of representation, but I think that's sort of ongoing work and next steps to get to that point. So, step one was sort of, this is my truth. This is what I noticed, this is what I observed, this is what I feel. And so, sort of the next evolution of this framework is to get to that point and to flesh that out a little more.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll just make a little, just comments from, I think, some of the work on our committee and student voice and a couple of the examples, which I, I, I agree with all this. I think, I think the microaggressions is something that I think the students feel frequently. And I think being able to have adult allies and where you kind of address that staff is lacking. Because that was the kind of the same thing I felt sometimes on that committee too, is just lacking the knowledge of what to say, when to say it, how to be an ally. I think energy and time spent around that can do a ton as far as changing the culture. Just because I think it's, a lot of times people don't even know what they're saying is a microaggression. And so, I just, I, I just feel like that's such an important piece. Not that this isn't all an important piece. But to be able to handle and deal with those situations in the passing of a hall in the, during a lecture on a, you know, when you're talking about a subject or something in, in class. I think, to me, if, if you can get a lot of people around that and understanding of that, that that's the kind of thing that can spread rather quickly and really kind of change culture. So, I, I just say that from the comments that we heard from, from some of the students. Is that there's just sometimes it's not an awareness of people that they're even, what they're saying. And there is obviously in, in some more direct. But just to be able to have the staff be able to support the student in that, I think is really critical.
Michael?
I just very briefly want to just thank you for the work that you're doing and for timing it tonight to come forward to the resolution. Full circle. And, and to pull out the words that you've put in your document and you've spoken about just the word story. Looking at our curriculum and our students and our teachers and everybody coming with a different story. And how do we elevate those and bring those together? And I think that's where some of the danger has been in older thinking of, let's treat everybody the same. Let's see you all the same, no matter what. And that doesn't work because we do have different stories. And I know you cited somebody in here too with the humanities work, but thank you for that. And I think if we can keep that in mind, that helps us grow forward.
Anyone else have any comments? Thank you for the presentation, thank you for your work moving forward. Next on our agenda is the Combined Polling Place Resolution, which I will read. Resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. I believe this is something that we do every year, so it's just more routine in nature. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? So made. By Mary, second. By Stacy. Any other comments? This is roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
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 Enrique? Thank you. That motion carries seven zero. Next is our legislative platform. This was reviewed at our work session earlier this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the legislative platform? So made. By Stacy, second.
Second.
And Michael? Any further comments? None. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy, aye. Jonathan? Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you for your work on the legislative platform. Now moving into the Ready to Learn Plan update, Dr. Stallow.
Good evening again. I'm happy to provide an update for you this evening regarding the ongoing implementation of our pandemic planning through our Ready to Learn Plan. Unfortunately, I think a lot of what you'll hear from me is, this is what we're doing and this is what we still don't know. But we are going to be able to share some information in terms of where we are, next steps, and some information that will be communicated to families later this week. As you know, I had hoped, I knew, know that we had, the governor was going to be preparing an update to share today and that got changed until Wednesday. So I had hoped that some of the information that he shares that might be pertinent to our work would also be engaged in this. So there could be things that are different on Wednesday and impact us differently. But I do want you to know that as we are moving forward, we have been in distance learning, as you know. Our secondary students since November 12th and our elementary since November 30th. Principals are reporting really positive feedback from parents, staff, and students about Distance Learning 2.0 and are pleased with the attendance and engagement in the classes observed as well as the routines and the consistency. A lot of improvements based on voices and needs from our stakeholders went into play and our principals and the teaching and learning team have just done a phenomenal job of really responding to that. Distance learning routines are continuing to be strong, giving us good insights into the best practices that continuing forward both in distance learning but also as helping us continue to have strong experiences once we return to hybrid learning. So we're learning things through distance learning. We're hearing things about didn't go, what didn't go as well as we would have wanted during hybrids so that as we prepare for the return of students in hybrid, we'll be able to implement those best practices. And that work is ongoing. Teaching and learning has been working on, we're actually meeting with principals this week around some of those observations. I do want to be sure that the board and community knows that even though we are in distance learning, I think you can go to the next slide, Kristi, thanks. We have had many students in our buildings throughout the last couple of weeks for in-person learning and supports during distance learning. Students receiving services in special education center-based programs, students who attend bridges, students who qualify as English learners, and other at-risk students who need additional supports and interventions. and other at-risk students who need additional supports and interventions are in schools with staff right now. So, even though we're in distance learning, you'll see buses driving around and we still have students in our schools. We also have many students, about 350 students in all of our elementary schools, that are in our schools being supported with childcare and in their distance learning with our Kids Company staff. So, our Kids Company staff have been asked to take on a different role, one that they really are supporting both the academic needs and then still obviously trying to ensure that the students are enjoying and having some great activities throughout the day as well. In terms of early learning, we did have a bit of a pause in early learning from November 23rd through December 4th because of staffing out in quarantine and illness. But we were able to restart programming in person due to improved staffing levels and maintaining those small group sizes that fall under the Minnesota Department of Health guidelines. So, we're really excited to continue to have those programs in our buildings. We are constantly reviewing and improving safety protocols, including our cleaning protocols, guidance as we learn more about the CDC quarantine ideas and guidance that they have. And we're also encouraging all students, even our youngest learners, to wear masks as they're able to. We've communicated to parents the importance of practicing social distancing, washing hands, and keeping contacts limited to the immediate family. As we all continue to do those things, we know that we'll be able to get our students back in school quicker. Just as we're providing distance learning 2.0, we're also providing distance support 2.0. Just wanted to share, when I saw this number last week, I just wanted to be sure that I shared this to the board members in our community as we look at the number of meals that our Child Nutritious Services staff provided curbside last Wednesday, 43,984 meals. So, just unbelievable service continues with, with, to our families. In the same way, our custodial staff has continued, we heard from Marine, continued to not only provide deep cleaning and, and deeper cleaning, but also doing that work around the construction. So, just doing some very, very heavy lifting. As our situation has continued to change and evolve, you know, we still have the scaffold approach that we're looking at. The Minnesota State Learning Plan has not changed guidance or given further guidance at this point, which as superintendents, we're hoping that they do to help us all in our transition planning, which is why it's so important for us to continue to look at that local data outside of even the county data. But as we look at the next slide, we will see the county data, you know, while we see a dip there, we know those numbers are still extremely high. And as I said, one of the things that that scaffold approach talks about is using the county data as that starting point. But then really, as we look at the next slide, we want to be sure that we are having some district data that we can look at. So, it's really important, we've encouraged our families, and it's really important that they continue to let us know when there are positive cases in their household with our students and with our staff so that we can continue to track that data. Our experience thus far has been that our elementary families are sharing that data that appears more readily than our secondary families. So, I would like to invite and encourage all families to make sure that they're letting us know so that we really have school-level data that we can look at. Meanwhile, as we do have students and staff in our buildings right now, while we're in distance learning, we're certainly tracking that data, paying attention to that. And where we've had to, we've had to close some of our sections in order for, for everyone to stay safe. As we look to winter break, one of the things that we're going to do just to ensure that there's, you know, extra levels of health and safety and time for our custodians and operation team to clean is we are going to close our buildings to the public during December 23rd through January 1st. The only potential change on that would be, we're currently in the pause around youth sports and high, high school athletics. So, unless there were, would be a change to that from the governor, then we'd have to relook at this plan differently. But as of now, our buildings will be closed to the public. And then as we continue to plan post-winter break, last Thursday, our Incident Command Team did meet with the Regional Support Team, which again has representatives from the Minnesota Department of Health, as well as the Minnesota Department of Education. And they support our desire to continue to work towards returning our students to hybrid learning in mid to late January, maybe early February in a free, a phased-in approach, looking at, we're looking at bringing our elementary students back earlier and then perhaps waiting till semester time for our secondary families at this point. Again, there's a lot of what-ifs in that, so I'm trying to be as honest and forthright with our families and with the board right now and also caution to overpromise or say things that then, there'll be things out of our control that we, we have to change our plans around. Again, Governor Walz will be updating us on the pause on Wednesday to see how that might impact our buildings. And we'll also continue to monitor those data points and reevaluate plans should COVID-19 conditions and guidance change. Our plan right now is that we'll be communicating with families after our Incident Command Team meeting on Thursday. That also gives us a chance to hear any updates from the governor. And then we'll communicate again with our families on January 8th so that we can update them with what we know. At this point, we do know that we plan on coming back from winter break in distance learning. And we'll be in distance learning for at least two weeks. We want to be sure that we follow the guidance that we've been given in terms of ensuring that we have two incubation periods after New Year's. And then during this time, we'll continue to support those in-person supports as we're currently doing. Again, then our goal as we look at this timeline on the next slide is to be able to communicate with families on December 17th. This just kind of gives you a timeline of what we have been doing, but give that next communication on December 17th and then by January 8th, know a little bit more about, you know, what, if any, guidance has changed, where our case rates are, and how we're able to, and when we're able to transition students back as soon as possible. Happy to take any questions. Again, I know that people want more firm answers and I hate not being able to give them. I know people understand the continuing public health crisis that we're experiencing and our role as a school district in ensuring that our students and staff and families are safe, as well as helping to ensure that cases don't continue to spread to overload our hospitals and some of those kinds of things.
Questions? I've got a couple of comments I guess I need to make. First, I want to thank the district staff for all the hard work. I can't imagine everything that you've had to do. I, I've experienced some parts of it and, but not, not all of it. And it's amazing what you've all managed to do, what, how hard it is, how dedicated you've been. You know, our custodians are working round the clock to keep things clean and then we're asking them to clean again when we want to do something different. So, I appreciate all of that. Having said that though, I really want to encourage the Instant Command Committee and the district to look at our earliest learners, our elementary learners, and get them back into the classroom as soon as we can. I know the reference was to hybrid learning. I'd love to see if we could, any way possible, get those kindergartners, first graders into the classroom more than twice a week. Back when this first started, I don't think any of us thought it would go this long, but these are, these are years that are very important. These are times that are very important for these little kids, for their social environment and social skills. And if there's any way we can get them in even three days a week, I'd really like to be able to look at that. I know we still have to do the social distancing. I know you've given us all the statistics, so as I'm making this request, you might be thinking, "I'm like, are you kidding me?" But I really would like to see some focus there. I know that's going to mean more cleaning and more work on everybody's part. But I really think it's important that we look at, at those kids. And I know it's more work, so I'm sorry. And I appreciate what you're doing so far. I, you know, I, I don't deny that it's, that it's tough. And, and making our decisions is really tough. But when working with the dial and moving the dial, if we could change that hybrid model a little bit, I think that would help some of our, our youngest kids. So, that's my comment. Does anyone else have anything else to add? Okay. Then we'll move on to policy. There are no first or second readings this evening. We do have an approval of one policy, policy 521, Student Disability Nondiscrimination, Section 504. This has been presented three different times to the, to the school board. Does anyone have any questions? There's been no change since the last time it was presented for sure. Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve this policy 521.
So moved.
By Michael, second.
Second.
By Enrique. Any questions, comments? Okay, this is roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Jonathan? Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Onto administrative reports, superintendent report.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, our collective work is always focused on that mission and tonight I'd like to highlight some of the work. First of all, I'd like to congratulate board members, Michael Nelson and Stacy Ruel, who served on the MSBA Delegate Assembly on December 2nd. This year's Delegate Assembly was held in virtual format due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The Delegate Assembly, which is comprised of more than 140 public school board member delegates from across the state, discussed and voted on 11 legislative, regis, excuse me, resolutions that have been submitted by school boards and individual school board members. Resolutions that received a majority vote will become the basis for the MSBA staff lobbying efforts on behalf of all school board members in the state. I'll let Michael and Stacy share more about their experience and resolution during the report tonight should they want to do so. We also held our first-ever kindergarten information session on December 3rd, followed by a Laola Delago Parents and Teacher Panel on December 8th. These were well-attended virtual meetings that were also recorded and posted to our enrollment page for parents to review. We're excited to begin the enrollment season for the 2021-22 school year and are encouraging kindergarten families to enroll online beginning January 14th. Our district has teamed up with Scott County to provide a series of virtual webinars offering mental health supports for students during COVID-19. Parents and guardians register for free webinars and then will be emailed a link to attend the meetings virtual, virtually. These topics range from managing mental health during winter break to learning how to support students during distance learning. We're seeing quite a bit of interest in these webinars and encourage parents to continue to sign up. Parents can visit, visit our website or Facebook page to find links to register for the webinars. In addition, we've partnered with Rock, Reaching Our Communities' Children, to set up mini-stores in each of our schools for students in need. Families can pick up food, supplies, and hygiene items. The mini-stores are located in the entryway of each of our schools and are open during school hours as well as during Kids Company care hours. And finally, a little celebration about our utility usage report. During our recent Facilities and Long Range Planning Committee meeting, we reviewed our annual utility usage report, which revealed a lot of good news to share. Over the past several years, our district has continued to pay less than a dollar per square foot in energy cost, placing us as one of the top energy-efficient districts in the state. According to the state of Minnesota's B3 Benchmarking for Public Buildings, only seven other districts of comparable size realize this kind of energy efficiency. Thanks to the public's investment in energy-efficient buildings, mechanical renovations, and our operator, Operations Department's close monitoring of system controls, our district saved nearly $173,000 last year in energy cost avoidance. Thank you to our operations team for their diligence in carefully monitoring our energy usage and arts, to our community for its continued support and investment in our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any administrative reports? They've spoken up. Board reports, Mary, did you have anything to add?
The Curriculum Committee. I felt that, well, first of all, Kevin reviewed much of what we talked about, but what wasn't really revealed was the ninth and 12th grade English and the parents' reactions to that also within the Curriculum Committee were just outstanding. The change in the reading to more contemporary reading, to things the kids could relate to, as well as including our diversity and equity program. The, the reception was just outstanding and I wanted to point that out. And again, the rest of what was covered was covered in Kevin's curriculum update today. So.
Michael?
Nothing new.
Stacy?
I, Dr. Stallow talked about the MSB delegate. We just had AMSD, talked about and approved the platform and some position papers. And then we had a public engagement legislative today too as well and set a couple of meetings for next year.
Jonathan?
Nothing of consequence.
Melissa?
No reports.
Enrique?
Nothing to report.
Bobby?
Hi, guys. So, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, it's a mouthful. We met in November and we got to meet, got a chance to meet with all of the sec, or most of the secondary principals, as well as the Guidance Department. And we just got to share our feedback with them for the, to the principals in regards to how distance learning was going and just a direct line of communication from students to the principals. And so, that was really beneficial, I think, and it went really well. And with the Guidance Department, the Student Advisory Council had met earlier in probably October, we had talked about how we wanted to make sure that the counselors had a good opportunity to reach out to students during distance learning and during the hybrid models and just making sure that they were still in communication and still be, still having the ability to reach out to students. And so, we just, we're going to give them some feedback on that and they had a ton that was already prepared that was directed towards exactly what we were asking them to do. They had created this amazing website with, and were planning on doing a bunch of office hours via Google meets. And so, they kind of shared what they, their plans for distance learning were. And it was really cool to see all they had done and I think that's been going really well for them. And then we actually have a meeting on Wednesday, another meeting. And we're going to have the secondary principals there again, talking to them about the potential transition back to hybrid. And yeah, just share ideas with them and feedback.
I don't have anything to report, but I guess I'll make a few comments. First, I want to thank my family for supporting me through all the time on the board. And I want to thank all of you for the confidence you've had in me to lead and serve the, the community for all these past years. I also want to thank past and present school administrators, staff, and school board members. You've all been great mentors for me. I'll miss everybody, but I'm going to enjoy having my time back with my family. It's been a while. When I was asked to run for the school board, I thought, "Oh yeah, sure, sounds good. This will be fun, interesting, challenging, educational, and a great way to contribute to my community." Well, it's been all of that and a lot more, and I don't regret any of it. Even though there's been some difficult times, some challenging decisions to make, it's been an amazing experience. And when I get really down about it, I go into a classroom and it's like a, a shot of energy. It's awesome to see all those kids in the school and I'm hoping we all can do that really soon. It's been an honor to serve and make decisions based on what's best for kids. So, again, I just want to say thank you. So, I get the last word. Future events is the MSBA Leadership Conference. January, it'll be done virtually, so it's January 14th, 21st, and 28th. And please let Martha know if you plan on attending. It is free, but we do need to register. And with that, we are going to go into closed session.